Chip, you ready Chip? Okay, 6:30. We'll call the May City Council Workshop to order. Before we get started, I want to read a notice of electronic meeting access and information to ensure government operations continue to function openly and transparently during the COVID-19 emergency while taking measures to protect the health and safety of citizens and government officials. Governor Bill Lee issued Executive Order Number 16 on March 20th, which allows governing bodies to conduct essential business by electronic means. Electronic meeting access and information is also available online at cityofloudon.org, and you can log in. We have all of our council members present tonight. We do have several citizens and visitors and department heads logged in. Call the meeting to order. I want to follow the steps that the LUB chairman did in the LUB workshop. As many of you know, we lost a very valuable employee last week on May 2nd. Jeff Belcher passed away, chief operator with LUB Water Plant. Had 31, 38 years of service with LUB, 61 years old, leaves behind a wife and a son and two grandkids. And so I'd like for us to follow suit with Utility Board and just observe a moment of silence and remember his family in your prayers. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you very much, and please remember his family. I will miss Jeff. He was a great asset to our utilities and a dedicated employee. And I think one of managers, Ross's comments about him, Jeff smiled even when he is mad. You know, he smiled all the time, so we'll miss that. Also, before I forget it, Chairman Campbell wanted me to thank the Loudoun Fire Department for kind of taking control of our meeting and testing everybody before they came in, temperature checks, asking questions. We want to thank them for their participation here in our meeting tonight. We'll open it up first with item on the agenda, citizens' input. Is there anyone virtually that would like to comment about anything on the agenda?
Everyone has been unmuted.
Everyone's unmuted, so you can just speak, and any citizen that'd like to address can do so. Okay, not hearing any. We'll ask anyone here in the room if they have. We have about six or eight people social distanced apart here in our room. So anyone here that needs to address the council? All right, we'll go to the items for consideration. The rezoning request, Cedar Park Drive, C4 to R3. This was on our April City Council Workshop, and I asked Attorney Frye to kind of give us a definition of how we need to handle that going forward. So Attorney Frye?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you'll recall, I believe Councilmember Dixon made a motion and there was no second. So it didn't actually come before this body for a vote up or down. The unique thing about zoning requests are they're subject to judicial review. So if there's not going to be a motion and a second to amend the ordinance, then there needs to be a motion and a second to change the zoning request, and the council should state the reasons for that. If there were future review of that decision, the board, the council's decision would stand.
Okay, I guess my question was too, since there wasn't a lot of discussion about it at the meeting, and I know it's difficult with the way we were doing the meeting, you know, when we created the R3 zone, it was unanimous vote, motion second, unanimous vote by the council. And Phase 1 was unanimous vote by the council, and we all knew, I think it was discussed, that Phase 2 would be coming at some point. So I guess we need to discuss, I mean, maybe what changed between Phase 1, Phase 2?
I'll give my opinion on that. The reason that I didn't vote for it was, one, I had citizens approach me and request me to not vote for it. I had no citizens approach me to request me to vote for it. The second reason is, this is our first R3. We've not had one before. I would like to see what it looks like built before we go approving another set of them. So I would like to see what it's going to look like built. What's it going to look like? Because I'm not a visual person like that. I need to see it. So I think, but the citizens who did come to me and request me not to vote for it, maybe if they're built and they see what they look like and how it's going, I mean, that might help them to change their mind in the future.
Well, I'm like you, I think visual is important. That's one reason I drove over to Maryville. There is one, the same developer built one right there at William Blunt High School, right across the street, and you see, there's probably close to 100 homes in there.
Yeah, I mean, I would just really like to see what the look is going to be before we start approving them on our road frontage especially.
Sure.
So that's the reason I didn't vote for it, although nobody asked me why I didn't vote for it either.
Well, I mean, and there wasn't even really a vote. It was, and I'm correct if I'm wrong, Attorney Frye, a motion and a second just gets it up for discussion. That just gets us the point where we can discuss it. And since there wasn't a second, we could not discuss anything, so.
Which means it died. If you don't get a second, the motion died.
Attorney Frye, let you answer that.
Well, after Mayor Harris asked me to look back at that, according to Roberts Rule of Order, we sort of do things a little backwards typically, where there's a lot of discussion and then a motion and a second. Technically, the items on the agenda should not even come up for discussion until at least two members of the body are willing to discuss it. So if there's not going to be a motion and a second to adopt it, then there should be a motion and a second to deny it.
I guess it's got to be one way or the other, up or down, one way or the other.
That's in the Roberts Rule?
Yeah.
Well, I read it said if it don't get the second, then the motion died. So are there changes in the Roberts Rule?
No, it's just, we've always done things here where we're in discussion first, and then we do a motion and a second to approve. But rezoning requests, because they're subject to judicial review, they need to have the reasons for the approval or denial on the record, because people litigate both approvals and denials frequently. But in the end, the thing we go on is subject to judicial review. Not as the TCRS, ARAH, is not subject to judicial review. What's the reasons on the record? Who wants the reasons on the record? I do to protect this city.
So I guess as if right now it's just laying its old business for the City Council to either vote up or down a motion to approve it or a motion to deny it.
So in the past, when motions have failed, we should have brought them back for a vote? Is that what you're saying? Because it's happened before.
Correct. If we're following the Roberts Rule of Order, which is what we're trying to do, then yes, it should be, it's like it never, it's like it's never even brought up if there was not a motion and a second.
So that means, like on the personnel?
Right.
That you brought up, it didn't get a second? It was dead.
Yeah, I think it was wrong.
But now, you get that illegally, right?
Well, I think we did it.
You brought it, you brought it again and then?
It's still laying there. I think you're right, Tim. I think it's laying there to be for us to vote it up or down.
It can be brought back up for a motion and a second.
And why didn't we do that? If we're going to do it now, why haven't we been?
It just wouldn't cost us nothing.
Yeah, the question wasn't raised.
Bring it back up.
And we even did that.
I didn't think to ask you.
Yeah, we even did that with the previous council. There were some motions that failed that, for lack of a second. I can't remember exactly, but there was, I'm sure there was some.
Okay.
So that will be, if there's any other discussion about it, you know, we can have that now, but it will come back up in our meeting in two weeks.
If it gets a motion and a second.
Yeah.
If it comes back up in our next meeting in two weeks, someone makes a motion for it, but it don't get a second, it's going to go back on the table?
Unless there's a motion and a second to deny the request.
But we're not required to make a second on the motion?
No, you're not required to make a second on it.
Well, then why are we going to bring it back up if it's already settled? Because if we bring it back up next week, there's a motion, it don't get a second, then it's dead again.
It's still on the table, there are no reasons on the table for it.
I mean, to me, if we're against it, we just need to vote it down.
It's my opinion, it's a personal opinion, if this body never takes up the rezoning, it's simply not rezoned. I would defer to Attorney Frye, any outside opinion, whether it be from NIMTS or any other body.
Nicole, I want to remind everybody to use your microphones, because the people virtually can't hear if we don't speak in the microphone.
It just concerns me that we've been doing it in the past illegally. Is that what you're saying?
Saying we haven't been following the Roberts Rule of Order. And our charter calls for us to, or our charter calls for us to follow the Roberts Rule of Order.
And Roberts, I'm going to get it straight. Roberts Rules of Order states that if a motion don't get a second, it has to be brought back up?
No, that it's still on the table, that it has not been brought up for deliberation before this body. Typically, we deliberate and then ask for a motion and a second.
Right, I understand that.
The right way to do it is motion, second, deliberation, the person who makes the motion has the authority to advance the motion, right then, the chair calls for a vote.
And a motion and a second does not mean you're for it or against it. It just brings it up for discussion.
Correct.
And a vote.
I mean, in the context of the real estate world, typically transactions are contingent upon a rezoning, and that a reasonable period of time passes without the rezoning, then the contingencies of the contract kick in, there is no transaction, and the request goes away. And it does depend on, you know, each parcel, each owner, and their, you know, willingness or enthusiasm for the rezoning.
I mean, I guess my point is, if there's reasons for it, we should vote for it. If there's reason against it, we should vote it down, one way or the other, and, you know, state those reasons why, as you mentioned, we should be willing to vote for it or against it. Any other comments or questions about that?
I would have to agree with Councilman Bivens. Unless the mindset of the people out in that area change, I can't see it passing. I mean, I don't mind bringing it back up, I don't mind voting on it, but it's going to take those people, and I agree with her, I'm sorry, but I didn't have one positive comment about it, not one. Even people that weren't even directly involved with it, wasn't for it. And it's tough for me just to ignore that. I mean, I'm not going to ignore it, bottom line. And if there was one mistake made in the whole scheme of things, the developer's the one that made it, because we, it went through with flying colors up on the hill, that there wasn't a lot of hoopla about it, there wasn't a lot of signs put out, it was just, you know, people weren't aware, so nobody complained. So we'd have been right not to do it. When he decided to develop the second face, he wasn't okay with just putting a sign there, but he put a sign down on Queen of Road and wanted to acquire that property as well in the same manner.
Kind of lumped them together.
Well, that's when people started asking questions. What's these signs about? And, you know, I told him, I said, well, if you go up on the hill, buying a motel, and look at it, that's what those signs are asking to do. And obviously, they did not like what they saw, and they were irate about it. And, you know, you would have had maybe two people on Queen of Road that would have complained about the Cedar Park section too. And we know who they were. But now you've got all of a sudden, you've got everybody down there, and it's like you went to the hornet's nest, you knocked it down, now you got to fight them, you know? And it's just, you know, I'm not, unless they change their mind, Johnny James won't change his mind.
Well, there's some questions from the developer that he may get asked for it to be even rezoned from to Light Industrial.
Well, that's prerogative. And, you know, they even said, the people in Hampton Place, as late as last night, told one of them, told two of them, stopped me, I was working down there, and they said, you know, if he would just consider putting R1, we would welcome.
Well, he can, with R1, he can put, you know, multifamily units and everything in there now, just like it is.
They just didn't want, they didn't like what they saw. I mean, that's all I can say.
And that's, we just need to deal with this and clear it off?
I agree. I agree. I mean, you know, it's not worth it.
Either way it goes, we just need one way or the other.
If we didn't, if we do it, it won't change a lot of it right now.
Right, yeah.
I mean, you don't want to say it to them.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay, next item is the Planning Services Agreement. Manager Ross?
Yes, this is a longstanding agreement with the county to jointly fund a joint planning office. Our contribution remains static at $25,000. It's the same as previous years.
Okay, any discussion about that?
So there's no change in what we previously had? None?
Correct.
Same agreement? Okay.
I don't think the counties voted on that price yet. It hadn't went to commission. I understand they're going to ask for an increase and a pullout.
Well, wait till I guess we get that.
I haven't received that communication. We just received the same agreement last year, requesting a renewal.
Okay.
Just giving you a heads up, it's a possibility it's going to change.
Okay.
We'll deal with it, I guess.
Yeah, as of now, it'll be on our agenda to deal with it in two weeks.
It's sort of part and parcel to your budget. This $25,000 should be included in your budget.
Yes, okay. Okay, next item is, I guess, the Benefit Committee?
Yes. You are a mayor and council. Your job is to pass laws. A rezoning request is actually a form of special legislation. You're not changing zoning, you're changing the zoning map that is attached to your zoning ordinance. So there's special legislation. Planning Service Agreement, that's a, again, part and parcel to the budget. Benefit Committee. It is the job of this council to approve policy and budget. The benefits paid to our employees is a blend of both. You choose the level of service that you want to provide to your employees in the form of benefits. We estimate based on historic usage what that will cost, and then we attach those numbers to the budget. Since February of this year, and really last year as well, there's been significant discussion amongst this body of the level of benefits to be provided. We use the analogy in February, March of the ketchup bottle and the amount of funding that would go into our bank account to fund our level of health benefits. After positive feedback, positive feedback received in favor of the idea of forming a Benefit Committee to explore and consider recommendations concerning our current benefit package, and most importantly, the assurance of adequate funding for a viable plan going forward, we have prepared a joint resolution with the Utility Board, both forming and empowering the committee. This resolution will come before you. There's still a consensus of this body to form this committee at your regular meeting this month. We solicit volunteers for this committee, and the recommended membership is Councilmember Tim Dixon, Utility Board Member Gene Farmer, firefighter Bill James, Police Chief James Webb, Gas, Water, and Sewer Employee Clay Townsend, Electric Department Employee Aubrey Kegel, Marine Corps Colonel John Franklin, and Certified Public Accountant Jim Thomason. John Franklin and Jim Thomason both being residents of the city.
Okay, we've heard these recommendations. Is there any discussion?
Pino, what was the discussion at Utility Board Meeting?
Pino?
What?
She want to know what the discussion was at the Utility Board Meeting?
There was a debate.
Yeah, they all, they agreed with the discussion.
There was a debate.
Okay, we'll see that committee expect good things from them.
Who'll come up for a vote, right?
Come up for a vote at your regular meeting, yes.
Yeah, yeah. If there's, you know, a problem with, you know, I think there's one that dropped off that Councilman James had asked about, and I think he's dropped off correct. There's someone, is there someone you want to add in his place that?
I don't know. I mean, John just didn't want to do it.
Okay. And I think Bill James's recommendation by Councilmember Bivens, I think that's a good recommendation as well, so. Okay, next item on the agenda is the TCRS funding rate?
Yes, every year we receive a recommended funding rate for TCRS. TCRS stands for the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. In early March, we received a recommended contribution level for each employee eligible for and a part of this plan. The early March recommended funding level was half of the funding level that we paid last year, and that was due to high-performing investment accounts, and we think the stock market was doing well, the overall economy was humming in early March. Well, then the pandemic hit, and we all know what's happened to the stock market and investment accounts since. So what staff is recommending to this body is, and this is part and parcel to your budget, is that we hold the contribution levels at the same as last year. That being 9.78% for city, that's 13.28% for public safety. Again, it's in keeping with our static budget of last year. But this is a good move, it's a smart move for the future, because we see, we anticipate that requested contributions to this will only grow in the future because of the economy.
So we're just trying to stay a step ahead of it and expect the funding levels to increase? Any discussion about that among council members? Everybody understand what we're talking about there? Okay, you'll see that. I guess, will that take any action on our part? Is that just information?
It's for information here in the workshop, but these numbers will be incorporated into your budget.
Okay, just so you know, that'll be incorporated in that.
In fact, included in your budget summary document, that's the 34 pages stapled, that assumption is made inside of it.
Okay. Okay, next item, I know personally, a lot of work's been done on by Director Scruggs and different ones. I'm sure we're proud to present this thick amount of work here. A lot of work went into this, and it's pretty impressive. So turn it over to you, Manager Ross.
Yes, we'll be joined today by Ellis Scruggs. He was supported in this endeavor by professional, licensed professional engineer Ryan Blake. He's here as well to field questions from you later on. But the idea, and this is what workshops are for, is to share ideas, is this. This year, we paved Commerce, we paved Carter Street, we paved Carding Machine, and we paved Ward Avenue. Question would be, who's next and in what order? Those are hard questions. So this is a potential solution to just pave all the streets, minus state route streets and state aid eligible streets. We would pull those out to try and get the 80/20 deals in the future. Without further ado, Ellis come forward and speak to you and kind of explain the methodology behind the map packet you see before you.
Okay, what you're seeing here, all the hot streets highlighted in red are the streets that we proposed to act the case. And the methodology behind that was basically looking at the condition of the streets, and it's probably easier to go over the streets that I did not include versus the streets that I've included, because it's a very expensive list of streets that included in the packet. The ones I excluded are Tennessee National, Sweetwater Creek, Lighthouse Point, Hampton Place, Creekwood, Lakeview Drive, Hillview and Hilldale, just meant the majority of those. And the reason I excluded those mainly is the condition of those roads. I just couldn't see spending good money on those roads when they're in fact in very good condition.
That's along with the state roads that got out.
The other streets I included, they're state routes. We could actually hopefully get some state funding for those. For those will be Copper Park Drive, Eaton, Merrimont, and Road Street.
How many miles is this, do you calculate? Was it 20?
About 26 and 1/2.
26 and 1/2. You can see in that C7 block, there's a lot of paving going on in that area. It's the main portion downtown.
That's at the S, and as we see, that we've put together, included Millings as a worst-case scenario, and now also the streets that were not required, we've got both of those S and put together.
I know you just received this packet tonight. Is there any questions for Director Scruggs?
I do. I mean, we've been talking about this for going on a couple of years now. Has any of these streets been evaluated like we talked about by the utilities? Do they need any infrastructure upgrades, like sewer?
Yes, that's actually been a, I'll call it, Manager Ross, do that, but there's been a project going on kind of in conjunction with what I'm working on, as well as evaluating those roads, there'll be a need-based assessment on utilities.
Yep, Ryan Blake is here, and he's working in close coordination with John Davis as far as what's going on, going on underneath certain roads. Suffice to say, not all these roads will be paved at once. They would be in a part of this paving plan, and they would be funded by this financing, but certain roads, let's take an example, Smokey Drive, there would be a delay in its paving. It would be some two, three years out while we replace the pipes that are underneath it first.
That are currently leaking and giving you problems now.
Ellis, have we thought about, I know you said it'd be great if we could pave all the roads in Loudoun, non-state road routes. But there's, I can foresee a problem with that, and you say, why would there be a problem? All right, what's the, usually the normal life of a paved road? 20 years?
I'd say 20, 30 years.
20 to 30 years from now, everyone will need it again at the same time.
I think the?
Could we not stagger that some way to where we wouldn't have to be impacted again the same way we are today?
What I would envision is in this plan, this is just high-level thought here, this would be a two-to-three season project, you know, getting it through paved, and from that point going forward, you create a, I'll call it, paving schedule. I think we're so far behind at this point, that's what's got us in the condition that we're in. At that point, 15, 20 years down the road, you start creating your schedule, and let's say every year you have a set of roads and pave them on forward.
So you're just trying to get everything to the same level?
Getting to a baseline and starting over. I think that was the thought again I had when we were talking about that.
Well, I just read it, you know, we're looking at maybe borrowing $4 million and paving them off, and that's great. But by the time, or maybe before we've got the $4 million paid off, they're going to need it again, or the majority of them are. I don't know. I mean, I just looked into if we paid a third of them each year, or each, for three years paved or something, I don't know. They wouldn't all impact at the same time again. And I agree with Tim. I think that if we could, we need to look at the history, the LUB history, underground especially, and see what that tells us about each one of these streets. Because I believe if we have one like Highland, which is definitely a problem, it'd be almost foolhardily to pave it. I mean, because we know we're going to be turning it back up almost for sure, and maybe go to one that didn't have that kind of history and work with it. And then work on these to get them up to par where we can bring them in at a time and put them on stream again.
That was part of the thought process of getting Ryan to help, wasn't it? it?
That was one of the discussions we had with Smokey Drive. At this point, I could not justify paving Smokey.
Oh, no, Smokey Drive.
No, these are not.
These enough water run over there to fill a pond every day.
But if we get into another situation like Highland Avenue, and we're doing the numbers on it, we need to go ahead, in that packet, is include the paving with it.
That's what we're talking about, as they do their utility replacements, is actually include that paving as a part of that project.
Right. But not all cost to the city, because it's a project for the utilities, it's an upgrade for them, they're digging the street up, they can pay, pay for some of it, I would think. Right, Pino?
Well, Ellis, and we, and I mentioned this to Ty when I talked about it. Smokey Drive, for instance, that's not a big project. I honestly think we could do that in-house cheaper than we could, but we could let it out, I really do. I think, you know, it's, it's not something that's, that we don't do every day, fixing leaks. So I don't know, I mean, we might look at some of this stuff in-house. I mean, so what if, if it's not feasible, we could get a bid and find out what's feasible, what's not feasible. I mean, you know, it's, it's, I feel certain that when you couple the water with the paving, you're going to get a shocking number. I mean, I'm sure of it, there's no doubt about it. As I've been down that road, you just decide where you're going to put that money in that contract, it comes to you first, that's what you do, and that'll be in the water.
Well, and this is utilizing the RDA grant.
Yeah, this is, I just wanted to get the, the picture before we, the big picture, and then this would be a highlighted item in the budget that we'll talk about later in this meeting.
Now, is this-
How to pay for it?
This isn't a grant, right? This is a loan. This is no match from Rural Development, correct? This is strictly a loan from Rural Development that will-
This is, yeah, strictly a 1% interest loan.
What are the streets that are set for this paving season as of now?
As of now, well, this paving season, we've actually earmarked the money that's remaining for Queen of Road. Some discussions that Ty and I've had in regards to the excess money we have now, I guess what's now the Queen of Road may be running over. So earmarking those funds for Queen of Road at this point. For next year, it's just about putting together the capital plan I've got in my mind, which streets need to be next. The ones that come to mind, obviously, at this point are Church, Cedar, and Perry, the ones that I'd love to see paved back, just for the condition and residents on those streets.
So Queen of Road will be ready for paving this paving season?
No, it's just the money allocated for paving is going for that.
So there's actually going to be done for this season?
Queen of Road is a T-DOT project, which we're responsible for 20% of. And the excess, the remainder of the paving allocation for this year, just about $350,000, the 20% that we owe for Queen of Road will exceed that, so we're just earmarking that to help pay for it.
So they're talking about the remainder of this fiscal year?
Yes.
All right, this fiscal year. We didn't start the paving until July of last year, so they're just talking about the remainder.
The remainder of that, right.
What is the difference, the match difference? How much more we need?
I don't have to be concerned with that.
It's about, I mean, we won't know for sure until the bid comes back, when it's bid out, but I mean, it could be anywhere between $2.5 to $2.7 million, you know, we're responsible for 20% of that. That's, that is a guesstimate at this point.
Any other questions for Ellis about the paving packet we have? Okay, thanks for your work, Ellis. Okay, the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget preview? Oh, I'm sorry. State grant, I already had it marked, our state grant proceeds, this, the money from the state grant.
Like TCRS, this is a state program. The governor has made available this fiscal year government support grants. It's based on population. What you need to know is Loudon was counted and allocated $158,000 for this program. I would direct your attention to the product, project category, which is IT hardware upgrades, including public safety systems. I know we talked about a siren system in the past, I firmly believe that would be eligible. Capital maintenance projects, utility system upgrades, if you want to send some money to Pino his way, he's got lots of projects he could use help with. Road projects are eligible. Public safety, including ADA-type items and COVID-19 response. So just a myriad of possibilities. I'd bring this to you for your workshop, for your feedback as to in which direction you'd like to send this money.
Okay, so these are some categories it could be applied to, and I think the funds will be available July sometime, so.
Basically, they have to make a decision before April 30th of 2021. That is a, that is a hard deadline.
Any question about the state grant proceeds?
Do we have plans on, I know Mark got an estimate on the old fire hall down there to bring it up to code, at around $150,000. This would be eligible for that. Do you have plans on moving Mark back downtown?
We have no specific plans, that is an option. I think inside of capital maintenance, you see repair, renovation of roofing, mechanical and electric systems. There are monies inside this program that would help fix up that portion of the building. So the short answer is, it's possible.
I mean, if we got plans on moving him down there, this would be a good way to take care of that. I think he told me three or four months ago that he got an estimate of about $150,000 to bring it up to code. And I think, I think Parks and Rec needs to be back downtown.
Yes, this body would like to spend the money that way, it is a, it's a lawful possibility.
And there's all sorts of, like I say, projects that fit inside each one of these, I'm sure we could specify it for. Another one is, we've talked about the red light out here at the exit ramp, and we've got to contribute some money to that. It could go, I mean, there are several reasons, and we could find to put it anywhere, but I mean, I like Councilman Brewster's suggestion as well, so it's just something we need to have a discussion on and apply the money where we think it'd be best used. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so we'll need, we'll need some, some feedback and everything on that to-
We don't have to decide.
There's $158,000 that's going into your budget, it's just currently unallocated.
Yeah, it'll sit there till we decide where to spend it.
Your hard deadline is April 30th of 2021.
And it drops in July, is that correct? Did you say July of this year?
Yeah, that's when you can go ahead and submit and, you know, make application for the money.
And you have till next year to spend it.
Right.
Okay, now the next item is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget preview. That's another big packet we have.
That's packet number two. Nicole Curtis is here with us, she's done a fantastic job pulling this together, along with the LUB budget packet. I would direct your attention to the page behind the cover sheet, which is the budget summary. As you can see, there's three main bullet points there. And we've got, we're projecting 90% of the revenues we had last year. You may ask, why are we doing that? That's primarily in response to the pandemic. We are tracking with state shared revenues, which, which are anticipating and projecting through MTA's a 10% reduction, so we're just tracking along with that. Proposed expenditures, excluding grants, inter-fund transfers and fiduciary funds total 8.5 million. Included in this budget is increased contribution to the ketchup bottle, the medical fund, that's $232,650. Other than that, in terms of payroll and benefits, it's very much a static budget. And I'll hand it over to Nicole Curtis, you know, for further commentary, especially as to these pot charts.
A lot of what we've already discussed and are reflected in these numbers. The pot charts, the purpose of those is just to give a holistic view of how the city dollars are received and where they go. We have 17 different funds that money gets divided up in the month, but when you look at it holistically, 48% of our revenue comes from property taxes, a lot of sales tax is a 13% in recreation, so that gives you an idea of where the money's come from and how they go out, what purpose they serve in our community. If you want to go on to the capital projects, capital investments, we've got three main areas, we've got federal grants that we have approvals for that are active grants. There was discussion about Queen of Road earlier. Right now, we're anticipating that project to be 2.5 million. And you know, we all know that project's been going on since 2013, so the estimates that we had in the budget were from 2013, 2014, maybe around a billion, a million and a half dollars. That cost is doubled in this time. So that was the funding we were talking about earlier. So what the budget anticipates is that we will begin, we will continue with that project in 2021, it's been 1.25 million. Our local match of that would be $250,000. The state, there would be another 1.25 million in 2022. The traffic civilization project is on track to be completed next year. That is a 100% grant, so it has taken time, but it's $1.2 million invested in our community, it doesn't cost us anything. Then there's $158,000 that is available, and those funds have not been put into the budget because I don't know where we're going to spend that, that is for you to decide. The next section is equipment purchases, and we have three significant areas. The police department, we're looking to put black ops in one half of the fleet, that will cost $37,000. Can we go to the next slide? $37,500. The fire department has a truck, I believe Chief Rebecker, you can weigh in here, that's 25 years old, and due for replacement, they've taken a staggered approach to replacing that equipment so that we don't have to replace all the fire trucks at one time. The idea here is to use a lease rather than pay $674,000, or $670,000 all at one time, we would lease it over five years. So this budget takes $134,000 out of our revenue to go forth that truck, but that would be for the next five years. And the last equipment purchase would be a leak machine for the street department. And the last section of the capital improvement is the paving plan that you talked about. And I, just hearing the conversation, I have to say, I appreciate the conservative nature that you're taking on this, if this is the best for the long term. From the water department standpoint, I will say that the water department is facing rate adjustments to be able to make necessary improvements. That includes active water flow. There will be some funds for repair and replacement of water lines, but there are $19 million of big projects that have to be done as well. Tying this paving plan to the water line replacement is tricky, I'll just say that. The next slide shows this maybe better than I can even tell it. We've talked about borrowing $4 million. With Rural Development, we can get that at 1.87% interest rate, which you're not going to get much cheaper anywhere. The annual debt service on that is $240,000. In two years, in year, in 2022, our debt service drops $240,000. That was coincidence, whenever I begin comparing this. So we have one year, if we move forward with borrowing funds, we would have one year of additional debt service. Our debt service, beginning in 2022, drops $240,000, and you see in the year of 2027 is our last year for our existing debt service. We paid off the post office this year, we sold it, our debt service is tapering down. The city is in sound financial condition to do this project if you want to. And again, I do appreciate the conservative approach to it. These, this debt service-
Nicole, they say they can't hear you.
Oh, okay.
Guess it's the microphone?
This debt service, where am I at? Yes, the paving project. This debt service is included in the budget draft that you have, but as I told Jason earlier this week, this is treason toner, and we can change it. So I need your, we need your guidance and what you want to see accomplished. The city is in a position to do this project and do it successfully. And that's all I have, Manager Ross.
I mean, it's just, it's just simple, it's very, it's very simple budgeting, it's straightforward budgeting, it's recessionary budgeting, we're anticipating a one-to-five-year recession. Your guess is good as mine as to whether it'll be, where it'll fall between one and five years. When money's tight in your house, you stretch your cash. You finance big things, a house, you get a mortgage, that car you need, you need. You finance it over, over four or five years or whatever. And so that's simply what we're doing here, we're trying to hoard as much cash as possible to keep it in. Why, why do we want to keep cash? So we can match grants. Most cities in Tennessee don't have the reserve fund to match grants. We should always keep and control that cash and pursue cheap monies, Rural Development's as cheap as we can find. And that's why we've recommended it before you today.
Tyler, speaking of the cash balance, can you go back two slides? One, keep going, one more. Oh, it's not on the, in your summary, there is a chart that shows the change in fund balance at the bottom of the second page. And that is our, the cash that the city has. So we're projecting just over $4.5 million at the end of this fiscal year. In fiscal year 2021, revenues exceeding expenditures, we're looking at $402,000. That's with 90% of our sales tax, property tax stays flat, flat operating budget, and this debt service is in there as well. So that's the position we're in, which is because of years of great management.
So even with the debt service, we're still in good, I mean, that's factored in there?
Even with the debt service, you're still in good shape, and it's, and it's fiscal stewards of your community, that's what you want to keep an eye on, keep an eye on the cash, how much is reserved. And right now, we're very healthy.
Well, I think too, it's, it's a, it's a good time as far as, you know, the price of oil and paving costs and everything would probably be in our favor as well.
And one other point that was mentioned, Councilmember James, you have, you made a great point about the life of the roads, 20, 30 years. When we first looked at this project, at the debt service, we were amortizing this payback over 30 years. But this number is a payback over 20 years. It would be paid back in full in 20 years. And we all know that roads were out at different rates depending on how much traffic is on them and so forth. So I'll stay in the financial arena and let the engineers go to the paving arena, but that's another consideration. This would be paid off in 20 years.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Question, Nicole?
Yes, sir.
Say we borrow the $4 million, how is it going to be tracked? Are there going to be a line item just for paving in the budget, that that $4 million only goes to paving?
That, there is a, a line item in here for debt- That, there is a, a line item in here for debt service. We would receive those $4 million in funds. They go to a special bank account, and it only gets paid out for paving project. It becomes a restricted fund. You can't touch it for anything else.
Okay.
It's like assigned, it's assigned to paving?
It's assigned, it's assigned dollars that we cannot use for anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this the year that we...
Go ahead.
You saw me when we talked. Is this the year that you think this is the best year to do this? Or could we wait until that debt drops next year and do it? I mean, we're, this, we don't know where this country is headed right now, but more than likely toward a recession. These are rural development loans, so their rates are pretty low all the time. Is this the best year to do it? Or should we give the water department and our public works department another opportunity to discuss? Let the water department get their, what they need done and in order?
Again, a great perspective. I think economically, yes, there's a lot of moving pieces, but I will say that the city is in a good position there. The other side of this is not just borrowing the funds, but how far can you stretch those dollars? Right now, the cost of oil is the lowest it's been in 20 years. I don't, when was the last time you paid less than $2 a gallon for gas? And so that's, I think right now, we have an opportunity to stretch these dollars to their maximum. That oil price will come back up as the economy recovers. That's another consideration. There's no crystal ball, you know, we don't, hindsight is 2020, but from here looking forward, there's a lot of positives to moving forward with this now.
When, when we did the property tax increase, it was only going to be for four years. What's going to happen when we take that tax back away, give it back, is this going to affect being able to make this payment?
Well, this debt service was in place before that property tax increase, so you're not...
Not affected.
Exactly.
It's basically we kept having the same debt service going forward that you're used to having right now.
Exactly.
Actually aligns nicely. If you do anticipate a property tax reduction, this debt service aligns nicely with that.
So things are kind of lining up for, I think that's a good question, is now the time to do it? You know, I think we just have to look at everything and make a decision.
The reason I'm saying that is this first year is going to be the toughest.
Exactly.
Yeah, it will be.
This, this first year, there's a, there's a peak to climb over. That 200, it's $200,000, but then you have $158,000 from the state. We do have, and remember, this is in the budget. So even with paying this $200,000, there's still $400,000 left. And also on that fund balance schedule, something we do on the utility departments is we set aside a debt service reserve. So one year of your loan payments. You put, you kind of earmark that, that's special cash, that's one year of your loan payments. I've allocated an amount for one year of debt service in this.
And we still have 400.
And there's still $400,000 left. So...
Will we get a good rate on this $4 million when we put it back in the bank?
Right now, they just, they sent me a letter last month that our interest rate got cut in half. So we were, we were at 2% and it's at 0.6% now, and I expect it will go down again. So we're, our cash is not earning great rates in the bank at this moment.
Is it just that bank or is it nationwide?
It's nationwide. I mean, the feds cut the rates and government, we are limited on where we can invest our dollars, so we earn the lowest of the lowest rates.
So you will shop around with this one?
We do. We do.
So I mean, it's a good discussion. It's a good discussion to have.
It's a big decision, and all the perspectives are important. So...
And I think to Director Scruggs's point, it's the roads are in such bad shape, it's hard to really pick one that is the worst. And this gets them all to the, some level of...
We could harvest wheat on some of our roads.
Yeah.
My only fear is we pave them and then, then Vino's boys go out and dig them up.
Well, I mean, at some point, we'll try every way in the world, we'll try every way in the world to avoid it, you know?
As soon as you pave a road, that's when a water pipe busts. I mean, that's just how it works.
The week after they paved the carting machine, I saw water running down the road. I said, please don't tell me that that's a cut. It wasn't, fortunately.
But we have incorporated, you know, other additional viewpoints to try to prevent that and, you know, trying to do diligence to start in the right order and avoid it as best we can.
We'll be perfect, but we'll do our best and be good.
At this point, I'm just, we're asking for your guidance on any changes that you might see on this document.
Thank you, Nicole.
On everything, the whole document you passed down?
Sir?
On the whole budget?
This is, this is what you will be presented with as a budget ordinance at the May meeting, unless we make changes.
So I guess with those changes, they should just get with you, you know?
Manager Ross.
Okay.
We'll incorporate that.
All right, just communicate those. If you haven't, I mean, you haven't had a chance to look through it yet, you just got it tonight. So, you know, look through it and...
You've got about six weeks until you pass this budget.
Yeah. So we've got time for a review on it to look through it. Any questions, contact Manager Ross about those. Thank you, Nicole. Good work. Lot of information on there. Next item, Public Works, refuse and trash disposal.
Yeah, we include it, since Ellis was here, just talked about paving. We include this in departmental reports. Director Scruggs is requesting a policy change. There's really two elements to this, and I'll let him speak to it in just a moment. But one element is a change in how we define and pick up rubbish. Another change is a request of the citizenry to put trash into plastic bags that goes into the cans along the street. And that, that plastic bags not simply be thrown on the ground. But Ellis, if you could come forward and just share, share with us what the department has come up.
They say they've lost all audio. I don't know if several people, Kelly Brewster, Mark Carroll, Bear Webb, several of them have said they can't hear anything, so. I've had, it's not just one person, it's several that's said they can't hear anything.
Nicole walks away for two minutes.
I said Nicole's working on it, I like to say.
If you don't mind going to sleep.
It might have, yeah. We may have to ask them when we get on there if they can hear. Do a sound check.
Can you see if we can, can they hear us now?
Can you hear now?
Okay, it's working.
Sorry for that inconvenience with the sound. Hopefully, we've got things fixed now.
Okay, what we're looking at are our refuse and trash disposal policy ordinance. And I'm looking at three sections of modification, and we'll just go to these sections at a time. The first one is 17-104, and that primarily relates to the brush loader. And really, these changes pretty much involve using the brush loader. And what I've done is, these aren't just for me, these are looking at the other cities that use the same type of equipment, how they, how they manage it, how they word it, and how they deal with these different challenges. So really go down to the highlights where it talks about below the guidelines. This is straight out of our current ordinance. Brush shall be placed at the curb or edge of the pavement with the cut-in face the street. That's no change. Stacks of brush should be placed so as not to block the public sidewalk. Again, no change. Small change here was tree limbs shall not exceed four inches in diameter and shall not exceed 10 feet in length. That way it'll actually fit in the vehicle itself. And brush shall not be placed under overhead lines or near electrical boxes, phone boxes, fire hydrants, utility poles and fences. These are things we really deal with on a day in, day out, day basis and slow us up drastically. And then all vehicles must be clear of the path in order to safely pick up the brush. Again, that's another obstacle we face on a daily basis. Again, and more of it is probably the vehicle and then the public not understanding the challenges we face, and it's just getting those things out in front of them till they see it. And what I'd like to, if you, if this is agreed to and approved, is actually sending out some kind of public notice so they understand what we requested. The second was under 17-105, containers. And really, the big change there is household garbage in bags. With the COVID-19 pandemic, it's really opened our eyes and really changed where we do our day-to-day base of business as well as everyone else. And what this has done is, our guys are exposed to everyone's garbage four days a week. And I mean, everyone in the state of there exposed to everyone's garbage four days a week. And just a rough guess, we probably have 20% to 25% of the garbage that's not in bags. And I'd just like to see that changed for our guys' safety and well-being. That's really what 17-105 involves. And then 17-107 is about contractor and construction materials. What I've done is tried to add some clarity to it. Before, I think there was a misconception or misrepresentation of what we thought was there, and this is just clearing up some of those, a little bit of confusion. So a lot of, a lot of changes there. Really what the primary change is would be, when we, when we actually bring a truck out for building materials, right now, they get the first truck free in a 12-month rolling period. We act, and the second truck was $150. I'm actually proposing the second truck being $75. Not trying to make any money. We actually prefer dropping the truck off. It makes it a lot easier on our guys and easier for us to schedule. As well as, if you didn't use the truck, the first load of building materials was free for us to pick up. Anything above and beyond that one truck load would be an additional $75. So the option is either you can put it out there on your own time, or we can bring a truck to load. Just trying to incent using that vehicle going forward.
Hold on, just a question, like under A where it says the homeowner's doing the work, no contract labor whatsoever. We've had that discussion come up several times. What if it's just, I mean, they're not contract labor, it's just a group of friends that's helping a person?
Have no trouble with that. Have no issue with that.
Life is, if it was a church group or somebody that's doing some work for somebody.
Correct. If it's relatives or friends.
Yeah, as long as it's not contract labor.
Correct. As long as it's not actual contractor themselves.
Thank Councilman James, remember, we've had that discussion on several occasions. Yeah, several occasions.
In my time here, I've only seen the second truck, $150 fee used one time. And I don't think before me it was used very much at all.
No, I think it's one truck, and that's all you got was one.
Yeah, and I don't think anyone's actually used it because the $150 was somewhat high, unreasonable. I think the $75 is much more reasonable. And the idea here is to incent the residents to actually use that vehicle so we can drop it off and they load it themselves. That's what I'm trying to actually go in the direction I want to go.
Which it saves you a lot of time.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But if they put it on the curb, you're going to have to knuckle-bump it up anyway, right?
Correct.
So if it's more of a convenience for you to drop that truck off and let them load it, why would you charge it? Period.
Well, right now, they only get one truckload anyway.
Right.
So all I'm saying is rather than charge them $150 for the second truckload, charge them $75. I'm actually trying to make it more convenient for the residents. I'm actually dropping the fee in half. It's really the direction I'm going.
And you're giving them an extra truck up, you know? Before, they had to pay $150 to get the truck.
They always had the first truck for free. That's the same proposal, but in this case, you'd get the second truck at $75 versus $150.
I'm sure your workers contributed to a lot of these suggestions.
Absolutely. This, this one we talked about review.
So I was going to say, I'm sure that's come up from the bottom up, from the people that deal with it every day.
Like I said, the first two regards to the brush loader and the trash can, these guys live every day.
A question I had, because I read through this and I was, you know, driving down through town, and lots of people just put their bags out. Is that not going to be picked up if this passes?
If it's in bags, it'll still be picked up.
Okay, so it doesn't happen?
It can be in bags or in conjunction with containers.
Okay.
I misspoke. It's really, the push is to use the plastic bags.
Just to use plastic bags.
We've got a lot of just loose, loose, loose trash is to go away.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, I was, I saw a lot of just bags laying out there. And I'm just seeing cats and stuff get in those too.
Then it happens. That happens.
A barrel or a trash can is preferred, but...
Does that, the 90 gallons, does it refer to those too?
Preferably, yes. I've left it open with the 96 gallon cans. We don't actually physically handle those. You're still breathing it as you dump it, and it's still, and it will be spills. If it doesn't dump properly in the truck, you get it on the street, this just cleans up the process. And actually, it's going to speed up our garbage pickup, I would say.
I guess the question I'm trying to ask, most people with the 90 gallons, they use bags with them?
Majority, yes.
And if somebody has a pizza one night and has a pizza box...
Pizza boxes are not a concern.
Throw it in there. You're not going to refuse?
No, pizza boxes are not a concern. This is more loose garbage. And we're talking actually loose household garbage. You know, cardboards, I don't nearly include those. Again, it's, and the way our town is growing, if we start using bags, this will be a way to counteract our time then picking up garbage.
Next question. They buy the cheap dollar store bags and the guy picks it up and they bust. Who's the responsibility?
We'll clean it up a few times and leave a note on the door saying that, you know, please look at me, invest in some different bags.
Spend a little more on bags.
It'll happen.
It'll happen.
Yeah. Well, adding an animal will get in it. An animal will get in it, a dog or something, get in it. It'd be great if everybody used the city cans, I guess, that, you know, that are available. Okay, any, any other discussion? Lot of thought and work went into this, so.
Ellis, you've worked hard this past month.
I've worked hard.
I like the way our public works is going.
Absolutely.
Impressive.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Ellis. I guess at this last row of the department reports, I don't know who all we have on there, Nicole or who?
We've got both chiefs and Mark Carroll, I see. And I apologize if I'm missing someone.
Hey, let's start with Chief Brubaker. If you can unmute. Chief Brubaker, you have anything to report? He's still muted, I think.
He's unmuted.
Chief Brubaker, you have anything to report? Chief Brubaker.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Hey, I want to thank your guys for doing the safety checks at our meeting tonight and the utility board meeting.
Yes, sir. We were happy to help.
Chairman Campbell passes on those appreciation as well.
Thank you, sir.
Chief Webb?
Hello, can you hear me?
Got you now.
Okay, I don't have any report. I appreciate you recognizing me, though.
Chief Webb, I did share with, I'll share with the group, your request to apply for another vulture permit. I did that today. We're waiting on approval for that. Went through the process to try to eliminate some turkey vultures and black vultures that we have, starting to see more of. So hopefully, we'll get that, and I'll pass it on to you when it gets approved.
Yes, sir. That'll be great. We'll reinitiate our eradication process just as soon as we get to go with it.
Yeah. You've probably got some guys itching to get started.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went to Mark.
Okay. It's all right. Mark, we're talking about vultures. Director Harold?
That's the place I can be, right?
Yes.
Appreciate you updated to, probably repeat the same thing I said last month. We continue to watch the CDC guidelines and state of Tennessee guidelines. We don't have a lot of complaints considering what we have, what we have closed, but we are slowly opening our assets. Tennis courts are now open, but you have to reserve a key. Best is to keep everybody from going out and playing soccer and doing various things on the courts. Possibly we'll look into opening a dog park, but everything else is still just kind of on hold in our department and watching this thing. We meet everybody, the manager and I, and we also talk with Dr. Gatter and get his input to just everybody on, on things as well. So we're just holding our own right now.
Okay, you want to give any kind of update on the splash pad in case council members get asked about that?
Yeah, that's, that's another one that, and I need to look at this last executive order. I was told today I hadn't looked at it, but did, someone told me it did specify something about pools and splash pads. If we did open the pool and splash pad and stay within the guidelines of the CDC, we would have to restrict the business out there so much that I think it would create more chaos and possibly more aggravation for people that would go and couldn't get in because we would... On good summer days, we average about 200 people at the pool. So, you know, we're looking at it on that angle as well. Would it be a riot if we tried to open and we didn't let people in? So we're watching very closely. It was closed open this weekend. We know for a fact it's not, and we're looking now at the first of two, and we'll reevaluate at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is that all the department heads? Manager Ross, it's just today?
I believe so. That I see squares for.
Okay. Thank you, department heads, for your reports. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Vivens, you have anything to bring us up to date on?
The Lark and Solid Waste has not met. We didn't meet in April. Our May meeting has been canceled, in-person meeting. They were talking about doing a go-to meeting or Zoom meeting, but that still has not been confirmed, so I'm guessing that's not a, not a go. I've only had one complaint on the road in the past two months, which is a vast improvement. They are working on the wash system to be put in. They've had utilities, I think, have been out there helping and getting some water lines and power lines ran to that, so every, every bit of progress is good for us to see.
Going in the right direction.
We're going in the right direction. Have not heard word that they've hired a new general manager as of yet. Still, the district managers, they are working, to my knowledge. But they were doing a very thorough search and looking for someone with experience to lead that area, so, because we are in such a time of contract negotiations.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Dixon?
We had a, Josh Sanders came about the second phase of the Sweetwater Creek subdivision, and he wanted that to RT, R2, high-density residential 11.7 acres to be completed.
That was the final plat, I guess, wasn't it?
That was the final plat that he presented, which was approved. So that's what we had at our planning commission.
Okay. All right. Councilmember James, you have anything to report on? Anything to bring up?
I'm good.
Councilmember Brewster?
So a few questions. I noticed on the state website, we hadn't closed on the Malibu property that we voted to close on in December.
Scheduled in June. I think it's scheduled in June.
Been doing a lot of walking, Kelly and I have during this. I've noticed a lot of the water meters downtown on the sidewalks. I know it's a trip hazard, the little AMI sensors are on top of those. I counted seven that's right in the middle of the sidewalk. Could those things be inverted where somebody wouldn't trip on?
There's more sticking out, I think, underneath than on top in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you lift that lid up.
Lid, that's what you see on the outside. You wouldn't be able to turn it up like that enough, so they do have wires hooked up on the inside. But I don't know what could be done with that. We certainly take a look at it and see if it's... So what are you talking about, all around ballpark?
No, no, downtown, up by the Chamber of Commerce, there's four. If you go up Mulberry Street right before you get to the top of the hill, there's one on the right, right there.
You think it's a trip hazard?
Yeah, because if you're walking in the dark, because half the lights don't work downtown anyway, if you're walking in the dark, you don't see it because it's black and it's right in the middle of the sidewalk.
I don't know if it'd flush them out or not. We'll look at it. We'll see. Have a look at it.
I just think it'd be a liability, I really do.
We'll see.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right. Director Ross, you have anything else?
Fill it out. Lot of ideas for you to chew on tonight. I appreciate your time and your attention and look forward to your comments.
Thank you for having me. Thank everybody for coming out and being present in the meeting. It makes it a lot easier to have a discussion, so. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
This is Chip Lynn, City of Loudon Mayor Jeff Harris joins me now. And Jeff, on Monday night's city council workshop, a lengthy discussion and a lot of items to cover.
Sure was, Chip. It was a very productive meeting, I feel like. We got a lot accomplished, had a lot on our plate to discuss, especially the upcoming budget. It's pretty much going to be a flat budget, but we have incorporated some discussions about some capital equipment that some of the departments need. The main item that we discussed the most was the paving project, and we've put a plan together, Director Scruggs has, to pave the majority of the roads, almost all the roads in Loudon. So we'll throw that around as council members and discuss that and see if that's a good plan going forward.